Good evening and welcome to the Norwood Board of Selectments Meeting for the 3rd of December 2019. We normally start at 7:00 PM. Tonight it is 6:15, and the reason we're starting at 6:15 is we have an executive session that's expected to last about 45 minutes. So let me read the Attorney General's recommendations if I may. We're going into executive session to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair soars the glass. So with that said, I will take a motion.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion to go into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Haja?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So we'll be going into executive session now and we'll be coming back on camera approximately 7:00 PM to continue our regular weekly meeting. Thank you all.
There's gonna be some good news, which is a good thing because the growth came in higher, but to have the exact numbers for your board to make a decision, my board would request a hearing continuance for one week so that we can give you the final picture with the new change of the growth coming into the adoption of such a shift from residential to commercial. And that's basically where we're at. Like I said, I just wanted to touch upon the past year, the measure and list. The company that we hired were very appreciative of all the taxpayers. They said that Norwood had a approximately 50% cooperation rate of people letting them into their houses to figure out, make sure that our records agreed with what was actually there. Very high compared to most other towns.
Can I just touch on that for a minute? If you choose not to let somebody's house, you lose a benefit.
There is. Under state law, if you deny admission to the house, then you really lose your chance to appeal the assessed value. This was an eye-opener because it's only done every 10 years by state law. There were a lot of pluses to having people come in. We had many calls of people who said they had looked at their property cards and said, "You have me down as having two full baths. I only have a half bath." So we were able to go out and make that change. Or they might have had an in-ground pool that they filled in five years ago, yet they didn't pull a permit, and therefore we would never have known unless they had told us that. So somebody could have been paying taxes on an in-ground pool that had been gone. So part of the good thing that happened on this measure and list is that we were able to go out and pick up on things like that. So it increased in some areas and it saved taxpayers on the flip side, that things that were being assessed shouldn't have been assessed and now are gone. So the values are what the state wants. They want us to be at 95% of fair market value.
That's required by the state.
That's required by the state. So we don't really have much say except to take all the property sales. And this is something I probably wouldn't do normally, but for determining the property values for this year, the, all the property sales that occurred in 2018, January 1 of 18 to December 31st, those were used in determining the present market value. And you say, "Well, that's kind of outdated," but the state needs one year, one full year of data to come up with a value for properties for each class. And it's different than doing an appraisal, which I did for many years. An appraisal basically takes what sold in your neighborhood within six months and within a mile, and it's usually a much more defined market area. But when you're appraising every property in the town, you need much more data. You need a full year's worth of data from, not just in the neighborhood, it might be from miles away, but it's a cape to a cape, or a colonial to a colonial, or a ranch to a ranch. So once all that data is collected, it's submitted to the state, and they go over it with a fine-tooth comb. And they want to make sure, if I say something's worth $400,000, that it's better be close to 95%, or at 95% of that. So that's just a little background for, basically for the public to know how we come up with it. We don't just go out and say, "Well, that house over there sold for 300, so that's gotta be the same." It could be apples and oranges. If one is a split level and one is a cape, it's totally different parameters in using to determine what the market value. So we're very confident, we submit it to the state, they review it, and they say, "Okay, you're good to go." And the same thing with the new growth. It's very important to show people, to prove to the state how we came up with new growth. In the past year, we picked up a tremendous amount of new growth by that door-to-door process. But we also had some projects that have come in that have generated growth, which you could start with Moderna, which when they came in, they've spent a lot of money refurbishing the old Polaroid plant. We have Avalon, which is presently almost 90% complete, but back in June when we had to set the value, it was about 50% complete. We also had, say TD Bank came online this year. Just trying to think of some of the other projects. The BJ's Gas Station and the Wendy's came in, although they say, "Well, they've been there a year," but you have to go by June 1st or June 30th of what was done that year. So they might have been at different aspects of being built then. And we've also had quite a few number of condominiums that have been completed at Endicott, which contributed to the new growth. So once all they're submitted, once the new growth is submitted, we're at the point where we're ready to determine who's gonna bear the percentage of the taxes. So we're 99% at that point right now. This one change this afternoon kind of skewed it to the favor of the taxpayers. So I think it would be wise for the board to hold off giving you the number, because I think the taxpayers would be happy to have a little bit less of a burden coming.
And I think we can all agree on this side of the table. Before I take or entertain a vote, I'll take some questions or comments from my group. Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. McDonough, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Howard.
Well, you mentioned 95% of current value. Campanelli, as we know, they've been sold.
Yep.
Substantial price. Are we gonna be close to that price?
On which property?
The apartment complex.
Their, commercial properties like that are mostly assessed based upon income. They have to show us what they're bringing in for rentals, basically. You never get to that complete percentage of what you want to be at, although it's sold for a higher number.
Way higher.
Yeah, way higher. It still has to be approved by the state based upon what's submitted for income.
For income? I thought it was value. It's not, huh?
Well, it's, on residential, predominantly it's on value. You could compare a cape to a cape. On a commercial property that's basically making money...
This was a residential. It's residential, but it's...
It's residential, but it was purchased basically to make money for the buyer.
But they get the residential rate.
They get the residential rate.
Right. I understand all that. But what I'm saying is, if they got a purchase price more than double what the assessed valuation is...
Yep. You can't automatically assess them at what they paid for, is what it comes down to. It'd be no different than if somebody really wanted a particular house and they paid more than the market dictates, you can't automatically just go to that purchase price just because somebody wanted it. It's the same thing I'm finding with Windsor Gardens, which sold for much higher. And I had all kinds of investors calling me, coming in and trying to figure out what the tax ramifications were gonna be. In my estimation, somebody paid way more than the market would bear. However, there are other factors that come into commercial properties, such as long-term investment. They may have money, they just wanna park and leave, something like that, that they're gonna, they know is an income producer, it's not gonna, it doesn't justify what normal would be. In other words, somebody shouldn't be paying that kind of money for Windsor Gardens. However, if it's an offshore company that has a lot of money and they're looking for property in the U.S., they may just pay more because it's worth them to do it. So it almost comes back to, it's in the eye of the beholder. How much would somebody pay for something?
No, I understand, but again, with the single families, if we have a trend that houses are selling for way more than they did the last time, where did the last time be? Their assessment is gonna be pretty close to that.
Correct. The part of it that comes into play is you have a lot of single-family homes to compare to. When you get to looking at apartment complexes, you only have very few to pick from and compare to. So not many Avalons or not many Upland Woods sell that you could compare into. So the sales comparison approach doesn't really come into play. The income approach definitely comes into play, and if their income of what they're getting, if we use their actual income, that's what should come close to the value. But if they're projecting that down the road, they're gonna be making a lot more money, you can't just make up the figures. The DOR won't accept it, they'll kick it back.
But if they have quite a few vacant units during the year, that's gonna skew their taxes.
Sure. It will come into play, especially when they, every year, all businesses are required by law to submit an income and expense. When I mentioned Windsor Gardens, they submit to us a sheet of paper that has every rental unit of what they charge and what they get. So that's their income, then they have their expenses, and then they have a cap rate, and that's how it's determined what the value should be. Somebody pays a lot more, there's usually something, an anomaly that's coming into play. You know, it's not just a standard, Tim McDonough buys from Alan Howard a house, it's an offshore company that's got a lot of money that's willing to pay for it because the tax ramifications might be better for them down the road.
As usual, great answers. Thank you very much, Mr. McDonough. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Maloney, sir.
Thank you, actually. Tim, the other thing you touched on there was cap rate, and then somebody, two potential investors might look at a property and one say, "I'll be satisfied with a 5% return on this for whatever reason." Another would say, "I'll take nothing less than 7," and that'll just change the price that each one would pay. The income is the same, expenses are the same, it's just the expected return on investment differs, and so that differs the profit, changes the price.
Exactly. It's a roll of the dice, and trust me, I would love to bring up the assessed value close to the sales price, if we could. However, whatever we come up with, again, has to be approved by the state. And if we jumped right to the sales price, they're gonna say, "All right, show me how you got there." And the only way to do it on a property like that would be on the income, and the income just doesn't support it. So it's, when we get the deeds from the registry, we have to determine the property that sold. Was it a qualified sale? Was it an arms-length, a non-arms-length? You know, what's going on, sometimes it's very, it's very easy to determine. You might see that, you know, Paul Bishop sold a house to Patrick Bishop, so you'd say, "All right, two bishops is probably a family sale that went on." So it's not a qualified sale, so you can't really use that. What you want to find is fair market sales, which help us determine the full market assessed value. So there's a lot of factors that come in that change all throughout the year.
The other thing, too, you're talking about new growth and the full measure and list and how that affects it. We do that every 10 years, that super assessment. So presumably, I don't want to anticipate the information you're gonna bring in next week, but presumably, and you said, the new growth figure is going to be higher than we usually project, or higher than the average of the last, the last four or five years is about $950,000 per year. This appears to be likely to come in higher than that.
Yep.
But we only do this full measure and list once every 10 years or so, right? So this is, I mean, new growth is always a one-time thing, so it probably, just sticking out loud here and asking your opinion, but it probably makes sense, when we get together next week to talk in terms of, well, it does raise our tax levy limit to a certain amount, but we're not required to go to that limit. You might want to leave some for a low new growth.
That's a very good point, Ms. Maloney. I think if, and I think I brought it last year, and I'll have the chart for next week, but it shows, yeah, historically, the new growth has been between 850, 950. There was one year, it was up to 1.2. That happened to be the same after a follow-up of a certification year. The state has changed their philosophy on doing full certification, which is a complete look at all the values. It used to be every three years. Due to the governor's change in municipal finance, they decided now it's gonna be done every five years. Now, that doesn't mean that property values, commercial and residential, aren't looked at every year, because they are. They're what they call interim years. So last year was a full certification. DOR came out, they go out to look at the properties, as well as our individual contractor that we hire, and it's much more in-depth. They want to look at all your books, all your values, all your income statements. That's done every five years. That's the certification year. Usually as a result of that, you pick up a much higher new growth, and then it gets back to historical, unless there's a big project that's coming down the pike. Like I say, Avalon will be 100%, so we'll pick up some new growth on that next year. We don't know what's gonna happen with the UTI building, if Moderna does take that over. Perhaps there'd be some new growth there. We did pick up some new growth, Norwood Hospital, sold for a lot higher than it had been assessed at, so there are, there are factors year to year, but on average, you're right, it's about that figure of, you know, $900,000, call it. And it doesn't, it doesn't usually fluctuate all that much, and it also depends upon the economy. Like I say, if you looked at this year, so we had the old building in 1412, 1420, Boston Providence, which was the...
Vare.
Vare Building. So that was torn down, so you lost the value of that building, but you picked up new value because now you have a BJ's Gas Station and you have a Wendy's. So the difference is that new growth, and hopefully new growth is gonna continue, but there are other factors. It's the economy.
Yep.
It's the availability of land, which we don't have much left, obviously, we all know that.
Zoning changes might help, might make a difference, too.
It could, with the downtown.
Downtown, looking at, you know, perhaps a rezoning of Route 1, 2.
Exactly, yeah. So there are factors. I mean, it's always gonna vary year to year. This year, I think you're gonna be surprised at the new growth and happy with it, but you're right, just because you have it, the new growth, doesn't mean you have to...
It's not a compounding effect, it's a discrete...
No, sometimes you don't, you don't want to spend it, because all that really does is spread the burden on the taxpayers, and sometimes it's better to hold that back, but that's within the purview. But we'll give you, that'll be one of the options, obviously.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. McDonough.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Mr. Haja?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to pick up on Tom's, because that was one of the two points that I wanted to raise as well. The growth, because it is the 10-year, you got the big one, we're not gonna see that every single year typically. Hopefully, it'll continue to rise, but not as big a jump this year, probably down. I think that's why we need to be conservative about the numbers. I know town managers already have been pushing us, be conservative on what you're projecting because it may come back and bite you. In this case, if we try to forecast this high number going forward, it will hurt us. And to Tom's point of trying, maybe if we have the ability to stay below the 2.5% as protection, because if we are fortunate, this year is the way you're projecting, next year, we're not gonna probably have that same high number. Now we have some roof, some room to maneuver, and I think that's important. Number two, in your presentation for next week, will we be able to see the effect of the numbers with override and without override, just so that we can show the people that, look, the override, this is the effect of that, we all voted for it, so we knew it's coming, and then this is, if you didn't have the override, what your effect would be under normal circumstances. I just think it gives the people at least a little bit of understanding of the combined effect, instead of seeing one large number, and everyone's taxes going up by, you know, a good number, and they get all upset about it, and wants to keep everything low, 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 and then you say, "Hey, look, this is what the town voted for, this is that effect." And then you have the normal every year, and it may not be as bad as people think.
Absolutely, and I think that's, that's an important part of the presentation that we have now, that as of just late this afternoon, I say that change in the new growth was determined where that new growth is gonna go, or what we would recommend. But it's still, you know, we're fresh into this override, and the taxpayers are, you know, obviously, they voted for it, they're gonna see an increase in the taxes, but I agree with you, Mr. Haja, that we could show, if there was no override, what would happen? There would be, there would be the standard 2.5% increase that happens every year as a result of Prop 2.5, and then there would be the new growth. This year, the new growth equates almost to 2.5%. The difference is the override, which equated to approximately 8%. So there is a big jump that happened anyway. So if, if the board can not go to the maximum on the levy, it will help soften the burden for the average taxpayer as a result of that. But yes, certainly, I can put together some numbers that show, yeah, if there was no override, then it would probably be the 2.5% plus whatever new growth, and then if you add in the factor of the override, it'll show on average. And that's, that's the other thing, the, you know, the average home value went up about $30,000 from 452, 725. I don't have the exact figure because I didn't, 452, I should know it by heart.
452, 725.
Oh, I didn't know. I had, I had a right, all right. I had the old one, see if I can...
To 481.
To 481, 340. So that's, but now, if the average property owner thinks about that, and also what we saw from the trend, the company that we hire, Vision, who came out and looked at all the properties, he said, "I'm seeing kind of a steady number here of 6%. Property values were going up 6%. Condos were going up 6%. Single-family homes, 6%. Multifamilies were going up 6%. Commercial properties were going up 6%." So he laid it out to me, and we checked to make sure his numbers are right, and he said, "There's something, he said, "I can't get it through," and I said, "What?" He said, "I just came from Hudson." He did the same exact process with the assessor in Hudson, which is further out by 495. And he came up with the same numbers, 6%. So he thought he had transformed the wrong numbers, but it just shows that that's what's happening in the real estate market. And if you think about it, 2018, and that's what we're talking about, the values, people have been buying properties, I mean, in your own neighborhoods, if you go around and you'll look and see, you're almost astonished, they paid that for that. But that's what's happening in the market. You read about it, well, you do, you read about it every day in the paper, like, property values in the greater Boston area are going through the roof, and there's a shrinking market for people to buy. As a result, apartments and multifamilies are being able to charge more money for rental properties and getting the income. Avalon is just almost full from what I've been told, and they're getting top dollar, they're getting top dollar at...
I think people are getting forced out of the metropolitan Boston area.
Exactly.
Rosendale, for instance, three-family homes 25 years ago shot money.
Sure.
Now they're getting over $1 million.
Yep, they're buying them. I saw that trend several years ago when I was appraising, they'd buy a multifamily, and all of a sudden, they buy a three-family for 450 in Rosendale, and then convert it to three condominiums, which they start selling for 500, 550, and they're still doing it. So that trend is still continuing. But to get back to the 6%, if you think about it, if you have a home, you really can't find a home in Norwood for under $400,000. And if you do, it needs a lot of work. And I study banker and tradesmen, I go on multiple listing services, and I see what's on the market, and there might be one, two, maybe three houses for under $400,000. And for us that have been around for a while, that's a lot of money for a starter home. But that's what the market is dictating, you know, it's a, the $300,000 starter home seven or eight years ago is now $400,000 starter home, and that's just what the markets bear.
And a lot of times, people will buy into a neighborhood more so than buy the house. They want that particular neighborhood, and they'll pay what they can pay for a house to get into that neighborhood.
Exactly. And those are the two, you know, I guess we're getting a little bit of a lesson on. So what's, once the property values are determined, and then once you figure out what your taxes, your levy is, that's where we kind of are at the point. Now, we know what the property values are because the state has approved them, so we're pretty, we're very confident that the values are right. Now, how do you, how do you get to the tax rate? The tax rate is you take the values divided by what town meeting has approved and what they voted to spend. And now that you have that factor, you have to translate that into the value which translates to the taxes. I know your job, this board and previous boards have always tried to balance any kind of a shift on the taxes to look out for the taxpayers, the residential property owners, while also being considerate to the businesses.
Correct, because we want the businesses, we want them to stay here, we want them to come into our town.
And we do have a lot of pluses that I've seen, you know, from people, I get calls all the time from all over the country, from businesses looking to relocate, and when I'm trying to sell them on Norwood, there are so many attributes that you can throw at them, not the least of the light department, but the residential tax rate, if people look around from town to town, and the services we get, I mean, today's a great example. You know, winter storm and the roads are great, if there are any power outages, they will fix like that. So it's, it's an easy town to sell, put it that way, especially when I talk to other assessors of how they're kind of managing it and getting through the economy at this stage.
I'm all set, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haja. Mr. Plasko?
I move to continue the hearing until the 10th at 7:00 PM.
Second. We have a motion to continue for one week from tonight with the full board, and I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Before you leave this evening, we've concluded that business. I'd like to, this meeting was scheduled for one hour, so we have, we need a lot of fellow time to get to 8:00.
We have to stretch.
Just for the public certification, a public hearing, the public has been given a 48-hour notice on these hearings, but we are required to have them open at the appointed time, and the next hearing is at 8:00 PM, so we have very little to do as far as new business this evening. So I'm going to ask Mr. McDonough if we talk about the Circle of Hope Luminary Night.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would love to give you an update on the Circle of Hope and the Luminary Night, which is this Saturday evening. This is our 18th, 18th year, I believe, that we've lit up the Circle of Hope, lit up the common. This board and previous boards have all been very supportive, not only of the Circle of Hope, but in particular, the Luminary Night, where we asked people to purchase a luminary bag for $5 and write a note on it, either remembering somebody or remembering the season or just buying a bag to help support the Circle of Hope. We're over 20, 20-odd years now with the Circle of Hope, which was started in memory of a beautiful young lady named Michelle Kennedy and her mom, Lee. It started the foundation with the promise of helping what the town did for her daughter to other people, to raise money if somebody was facing catastrophic illness, and they didn't have any... and they didn't have anywhere else to turn. It started from a small group of several people around Lee Kennedy's dining room table, and it's still, that same group still meets here. 20-odd years later, we started with an initial grant from the Bark Foundation, which was granted through this board, I think it was 2,500. Right now, as of last week's meeting, we've given out in assistance $870,000 since we started for things as simple as paying for parking at Dana Faber, to paying a mortgage, to paying a fuel bill, for people that just don't have anywhere else to turn. I always, I always like to say, you know, everybody gives to the Jimmy Fund and Dana Faber, and that's great, because they do so many good things. But the little things that we were able to do, helping people, it's just incredible that, and we don't know, I, I don't even know who we help, I don't know how much money we give them, I just know that to get money out of the Circle of Hope, it goes through a process, and, and the people review it and are very vigilant about who gets the money.
It's confidential.
It's completely confidential, and we, there is not one penny that comes in that does not go to help somebody in town. It's, it's a tremendous group. In this particular, we have our Dancing with the Stars, which is a great fun night, and a lot of the board members here have been very involved in that, from dancing to judging. But the Luminary Night is very special because it's kind of the kickoff to the holiday season. I know there's a Christmas concert this Thursday night, I believe, and Saturday, we have the Luminary Night. And if you've never seen it, just, even if you could just come down that night for a little bit of a time, just to walk around and see, not only the bags that are lit up, but if you walk by and read some of the messages, it's overpowering. We're going to have the Colonial Boys there, the Magicals will hopefully be there, we're going to have entertainment, we're going to have hot chocolate. It's from 5:00 to 7:00. It's at the common. You can purchase luminary bags that evening, or you could see Lee Kennedy at the Civic, or any of the board members. It's truly a tremendous, just a couple of hours from 5:00 to 7:00. It promises to be one of the coldest nights of the year, as usual.
Always the first one.
Mrs. Kennedy had called me today to see if we could maybe move it back to Sunday because it might be a little warmer, and that just wouldn't be right, that we have to keep it, plus the Patriots are playing Sunday.
I think that's a part of the allure.
I didn't really want to say that to leave.
I think it's part of the allure. It's, it's wintertime, it's, it's the season, the cold weather, the stone, the ground, I think that's all a part of the.
Yeah, I think it's, it's, it's just, like I say, it's, it's an overwhelming, powerful feeling to come down there and see what, what your fellow citizens are feeling and remembering people. And it's a great money, money raiser for the Circle of Hope, which transfers to helping people. It helps your neighbors, that's the one thing, you know, I tell people about the Circle of Hope, it's neighbors helping neighbors, and that's exactly what it is.
And it goes back to what you talked about on the real estate side. It's that kind of a town. It's got everything for everybody.
Exactly.
We take care of each other.
So I'll invite everybody here and everybody at home, hopefully, to stop by and bring the family.
Well, thank you for your almost 45-minute dissertation.
I told you I could do it if you needed.
I knew you would. So thank you for the information.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members, and we'll see you one week from tonight.
And again, they can either contact Lee Kennedy at the Recreation Center during the day, or they can come that night, Saturday night between 5:00 and 7:00, and purchase a bag at that time.
That's correct.
And have some hot chocolate.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Tim, on that, you put sand in the bags, a little bit of sand, a cup or so of sand in each bag. How many 50-pound bags of sand do you usually get?
We're, we're very lucky because Home Depot donates those. We usually get about 20 bags per year, and.
I thought it was even more than that.
And what, well, it's, what's great is from the, our first year, standing there with plastic cups and filling, as you all have done.
Oh, yeah.
This year, Asha Gertie and, and the other members of the board, they, they've already started filling the bags because we sell them in the schools. So a lot of the school kids like to already decorate them and put, put messages on them. So we've already started filling, you have to figure, we do almost 2,000 luminary bags, and it goes all the way around the common.
Sure, we know.
We started this year, we tried to incorporate uptown businesses to kind of partake, and we're going to slowly move into that. Obviously, we don't want lit candles up and down Washington Street, so we're going to start out with candles that can be lit electrically. But that's where we want to grow to eventually, but yeah, that's a lot of bags, and now, now we, so we start going, but if you, if you get there at 3:00 on Saturday, you're going to see a field of people coming out, of all ages, high school kids come down to help the sports teams.
Right.
And we'll have it done. So by 5:00, the Colonial Boys will be marching, Jimmy Grover will be leading, and we'll be having a great night, so.
Any other comments? Mr. McDinner, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members. Thank you.
Okay, as we said earlier, the public hearing was posted for 7:00 to 8:00 PM, so we have about 17 minutes of time, and I'm sure we can fill that time. If we could get into new business, we have request number one for New Year's Eve, and it would be with the board vote to approve the extension of hours on New Year's Eve, Tuesday, December 31st, 2019, until 2:00 AM rather than 1:00 AM. You know, Wednesday, January 1st, 2020, if the staff will notify all the licensed premises or licensees, if that is the case.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Howard.
Thank you. This is something we do every year.
Correct.
So I make a motion that we approve the 2:00 AM closing.
Second.
Just a question.
Comment, go ahead.
Yes, so we're basically, just, it's basically an overall extension of hours till 2:00 AM.
On New Year's Eve.
All the conditions, stay in place, everything else.
Right, absolutely. It's just an extension for 1:00, 1:00 AM until 2:00 AM.
1:00 AM to 2:00, okay.
On New Year's Eve, 31st into the 1st.
Got you.
So I have a motion.
For a second.
And I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to talk really slow. All in favor and opposed unanimous? That brings us up to number two, which is an informational. James Malia, Constable, submitting a letter of resignation effective November 30th, 2019.
Information filed.
Second.
I have a motion to file this information and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Mr. Manager, do you have an update that could last a few more minutes?
Well, let's see if I can get through 15 minutes.
I'm sure you can.
Couple of different updates. I should just always have the OPEP presentation ready to go, just for the heck of it. I mean, I brought my budget book just in case we need some additional material, but I just want to thank our assessor, Tim McDonough, for taking up the majority of the hour because it would have been tough for me to get through. Few small updates for the board. The Traffic Advisory Committee has met. We will have some updates and recommended action items for the board next week. There's probably about a half a different, half a dozen different items they have reviewed. We'll have some recommended changes to our traffic rules and regulations, recommended installation of some signs somewhere. There's some other items that we'll be sort of sending to traffic review or sending to study, but we'll have information from them shortly. Just an update on the storm. We actually weathered the storm fairly well. There was only one power outage, actually, yesterday, we had one tree down for a short period of time. Other than that, there were no power outages. We reported no damage to equipment. I'm happy, I'm always happy with the great job the DPW does. We are struggling to find and maintain contractors. We actually lost a few of our contractors to a large commercial contract at Gillette Stadium, so that's always tough. This time of year, towns are always struggling to get contractors. With the economy, it's getting a little bit more difficult. It's a challenge with a good economy that people are able to go where the highest dollar amount is, and even paying that prevailing wage isn't always available, or doesn't always guarantee the availability. I know towns throughout the Commonwealth are struggling with that issue, but the DPW did a great job. Public safety reports low activity, which is always important during any storm for folks, if you don't have to be out on the roads, to stay off the roads. The fewer accidents that we have to respond to reserves our capacity to respond when we absolutely have to respond to an incident. Hydrants are in good shape, but it's always a good idea to shovel out your local friendly hydrant that's near or adjacent to your house. We do a great job with it, but obviously, the DPW and other departments can't get to all the hydrants in town, so if there's one near your house, it's always in your best interest to shovel out the hydrant. A couple items for the board I do have for your signature this evening. This is the intermunicipal agreement between the Town of Norwood and Sharon for the Energy Manager position. It's been sent to them and their council. Our council's reviewed it, the board approved it. Now, we just need the actual two copies of the signed documents so that we can send it off to them, and we'll be posting that position shortly. So if the board will be able to sign that this evening and get that to me, that would be helpful. One copy for us, one copy for them. I think the signature sheets are on the last page. The Christmas holiday concert is this Thursday at the Norwood Theater. All proceeds go to the Norwood Fine Arts Program. Tickets are available at the door, and it is $15 a ticket. The doors open at 6:30, and the show starts at 7:30. We will be having the Menora Lighting Festival, again, Ceremony, rather, this December 22nd on the common at 5:00 PM. The board approved this a couple of weeks ago. We did this last year for the first time. This will be the second annual event, so we're looking forward to that. As I mentioned in relation to the IMA agreement with Sharon, we'll be posting the Energy Manager job description soon, probably tomorrow or the following day. The School Building Committee will be doing our first site visit in the next couple of weeks. I believe we're going to Natick to view a similar school that we would be looking at, built in the last five to 10 years, so we will have a report out to that when that happens. I'm going to pass out a flyer here for the board. I know we've mentioned this. There is a very important community event on January 9th. I know we don't want to think of 2020, but it's right around the corner. January 9th, 2020, in the High School Auditorium, the town is hosting Alex Berensen, who is an award-winning author and former New York Times, New York Times reporter. He's the author of Tell Your Children the Truth About Marijuana, Mental Illness, and Violence. It's a community presentation on marijuana truths and risks. It's being sponsored by Impact Norwood and the Health Department and the Norwood Police Department. So the book that he actually wrote, I found fascinating. I read the book, came back from vacation, ordered several copies, have had folks in the Health Department and in Public Safety read the book. Really takes a unique approach on the question of marijuana and society. So fascinating book, I think he'll be an interesting office, or author, be a great speaking opportunity. It's open to the community as a whole. We are asking that folks register. You can go to impactnorwood.org/upcoming-events, and you can actually register. We are holding in the High School Auditorium, so we do have good capacity, but we just want to make sure that we don't go over capacity for the actual event. Trash has been delayed by one day this week. That's probably the number one call we get when the, after a storm, is whether or not trash has been delayed. Trash has been delayed a week, sorry, a day, not a week. So your regular day is getting pushed out one day this week. One item of discussion that the board may not want to take up today, of course, but at some point in the future, is the question of short-term rentals. So that would be Airbnb or renting on a site like Vacation Rentals by Owner. The state passed a law about a year ago adding the, effectively adding the hotel tax to short-term rentals, and it was actually a long time coming. So we will automatically collect that rental through the state, just as we would with any hotels in town with the hotel stacks we do. There is an option for an additional 2% to 3% surcharge on short-term rentals, should the town want to accept that. I believe it's done through town meeting. The question that we have is short-term rentals, as we understand them, actually aren't allowed under the town's bylaws. We do know they happen. It's, if you go on Airbnb, you can type in really any town, it, as you know, the question sort of became, how do these become regulated under the state? But it's something we may want to discuss. Do we look at adding that short-term tax? But then, do we have to make any changes to our zoning code to actually allow short-term rentals? Do we want that? There may not be a prohibition on doing that. Most of the opposition to short-term rentals is based in zoning codes dating back decades to prevent boarding houses, so this is sort of a, a challenge. But something we may want to take up as we go into the winter, into the spring, and talk with the planning board about especially, what we may want to look at for the spring town meeting, for annual town meeting, I should say, is whether or not we want to actually do something about it, that there's not really a lot of revenue in it, but Airbnb is growing, it's coming further and further out into communities. It's not a big presence here in Norwood. The revenue amount is minor, but it may be something that the board wants to look at discussing and providing some guidance to staff and working with the planning board on whether or not it's something we want to address, or is it something we relatively believe unaddressed because there's not a lot of revenue or regulation thereof. Two points of happy note. We conducted interviews earlier in the week for the Deputy Fire Chief position. As the board knows, we have one position that was added, and we will be replacing Ron Madjo as he retires after a long career with the town at the end of this year. So we have made one promotion. Lieutenant Dave Hayes, who has served us for 27 years in the Norwood Fire Department, will be the next Deputy Chief of the Norwood Fire Department. He will begin his service sometime around January. So we're very happy with that. I think he'll be a great addition to the team at the fire department, and certainly, I know Chief Brooks will, sorry, Chief Maurice will look to his assistants in moving the fire department forward and taking on a lot of the initiatives that we've started over there, so we're very happy about that. There's also been a promotion at, and Chief Brooks, we'll be bringing him by to meet and greet with the board, I believe, at his next, next report to the board.
Chief Maurice.
Chief Maurice, sorry. There's also been a promotion at the police department. We have promoted Officer Kevin Joseph to the position of Sergeant. So Sergeant Joseph has been with us just under two years, but has around eight years as a police officer in total. He's a Norwood native, and he's also a graduate of Bridgewater State University, so he comes with a phenomenal educational background. As you know, Bridgewater State University provides a great, great undergraduate, graduate program, and has been providing the town of Norwood with great public servants for many years to come, so we're very happy about him and his, his qualifications. So we are happy for both of those announcements. And I believe with that, even though we have a few moments left, I would be more than happy to answer any questions the board may have on any of these items or any other items that you may have.
Absolutely, go ahead. One is that I think when I was at the seminar with DLS this past September, they talked about the state law that governs proposals by towns to adopt changes that would allow them to collect the taxes. The state has the, a listing of, within each town, you can get from them how many are in your community, so it's not like you have to run around and do it, but you can get a list from them, and that might be helpful to know so that you can see if this is worth really doing. If we have, if we have three properties that are doing it, then it's really, I don't know, would you do it? But if you had 25 properties, then you would say, well, you know, that's really something to seriously consider, so we do want to start.
Our number is, it's closer to the three. The, the dollar amount as of today is not a whole lot in terms of revenue, especially with, I think we take $600,000 or $700,000 in on hotel excise tax. We might be looking at a couple thousand dollars more. Of course, we want every revenue dollar we have. The challenge we're going to have to look at is, do we then need to change our zoning regulations? And how difficult and complex is that going to be if we want to allow it? And then, as you know, the challenge of short-term rental deals is the enforcement. Do we really spend the zoning officer, tell him to go looking on Airbnb and then running to houses? And it, it becomes a challenging enforcement issue. It's one of the reasons it took the state so long to finally agree on just charging the same hotel stacks, which we'll collect regardless. The state, the state actually collects that for us, but be worthwhile point of discussion for the board at some point.
Second, is, is there a reason why the senior center operation is tied to whether the schools are open or closed?
You know, I just realized that myself when I saw that come out yesterday. When the schools close, the senior center closes.
Correct. We don't want seniors going out when there's, when the weather's not good. That's actually common in a lot of communities, that seniors generally, there's, we don't want the bus running, we don't want seniors out there if there's challenges with transportation. So it's easy to say if the schools have been closed, you keep the senior center closed, they wouldn't want to be there. That's at their request and their, their discretion. It's different if we were to open it as an emergency warming shelter, but we generally, when the weather's bad, we don't want seniors out on the road.
There's also potential for falls.
Correct. The potential risk there goes up. So most senior centers like to play it safe when the weather's bad and, you know, have their participants stay warm at home.
Thank you. Anything else? Anything else from the Board? So much for the managers' update. We can either go through the selectmen's agendas if anybody has any comments.
Yeah, a couple of things.
If you can do it in the next 28 seconds. Or wait till after the hearing.
We have five minutes.
I'll be quick.
Less than one minute per selectman.
Shall we discuss whether or not we do this? No. No, actually, just a couple of community calendar things. I see Mr. Muzuka mentioned the holiday concert and Mr. Chairman. You're going to talk about that. No, you can hold on to it. So I got a couple of things. First of all, the weather being as bad as it was on Thanksgiving morning, I decided that my back was giving me trouble. So I did not attend the Noah Dedham football game. However, I did watch it on NCM Live. And I want to congratulate the Noah High School team for a great last-second victory. And NCM for a terrific broadcast from Dedham. They really did a great job and kudos to everybody. Kudos to the seniors, such as Aiden Pryor and Connor Sheen and all the rest of the one on the team, and to the NCM staff who worked the event. And second, and I'll bring this up again next week. I have a flyer and I left it at work. The Parkway Concert Orchestra, Parkway Concert Orchestra, will be hosting its 75th Annual Holiday Concert on Sunday, December 15th, at the First Congregational Church here in Norwood at the corner of Wallpole and Winter Streets. Okay? The showtime is at 4:00. Doors open at 3:30. It's a great program of Tchaikovsky and a lot of other famous composers. And your correspondent has been asked to give a performance reading, "Twas the Night Before Christmas." So I'm honored to be able to do that. And I'll bring in the flyer next week to remind you. But it's Sunday, December 15th, at the First Congregational Church. 4:00 PM is going to be a wonderful concert by the Parkway Concert Orchestra. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anything else on the Board?
I did have one more item. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Are we going on our agendas, you mean?
If you have something without getting into really...
This is pretty quick. First thing, the Day House has several entertaining presentations that they have this year. Probably about a half a dozen or so. If you go on the Historical Society's website, you can see exactly what they have going on. Some of them look real good, if not all of them. So you might find something that you really enjoy down there to take advantage of. So having said that, the town political season is fast approaching. The deadline for nomination papers is February 18th this year in Norwood. I just want to make public notice that I will not be running for reelection next April. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. It is now 7:58.
I have one more item if you'd like me to... Could NCM pull up the photo we have for the screen?
I'm going to regret this, I know I will.
I'm sure. So last November 20th marked 31 years to the date that John Carroll was appointed as general manager November 20... Sorry, November 20th, 1978. So that is John there, third from the left with his wife Penny. I believe that's Marty Leiden on the left.
Correct.
Yes, Joe Curran.
Joe Curran. So we just... One of the interns, we posted this on the town social media page. They dug this photo out of one of the old town reports. But we thought it was a great photo of John and company. And kudos to John on his many years of service to the town. And I believe his wife Penny just celebrated her 80th birthday as well.
That's great.
So that is all I have, Mr. Chairman. And I do believe it's now 8:00.
7:59. Thank you for your information. And we have a public hearing. Mr. Ous, if you'd like to come in and have a seat. This is a public hearing. Mr. Ous, Ous of 18 Plimpton Avenue is requesting a submitting an application for Class II dealer's license at that location, 18 Plimpton Avenue, number two. Would the clerk please read the notice?
Application for Class II motor vehicle license. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen of the town of Norwood will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019, at 8:00 PM in room 34 Selectmen's Chambers, Norwood Town Hall. On application of Amazon Auto Services, 18 Plimpton Avenue, number two, Mass for a Class II motor vehicle license. Board of Selectmen, Polly Bishop, Chairman.
Thank you. Do I pronounce the name properly, Ous?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Did something right today. Okay, you're looking for a Class II license to operate... Class II motor vehicle, used motor vehicle license, to operate out of that location at 18 Plimpton Avenue. Could you tell the Board exactly what you have in mind, sir?
Absolutely. So currently, I'm in the business of service caring and I'm just expanding through the town to start a dealership, pretty much, used auto shop. The plan is to obtain the licenses first through the town, see what their other additional requirement, and expand from there to an actual lot within the town, supposedly, hopefully.
When you say an actual lot, are you talking about cars?
Yes, sir. As far as my understanding from the inspector building, the building inspector, due to the kind of this application, I'm not allowed to, you know, park or operate any cars that's not registered through the property due to the zoning. So that's where the lot situation got mentioned.
Questions for the Board? Mr. Plaskoff.
Why wouldn't you get your business all planned and then come for the license? Why come for the license first?
Mainly because I already have a full-time situation that I'm working with right now.
What do you mean, a full-time situation?
I currently am employed. So this is just a start of a business before I fully jump into it, trying to have all the ducks in a row before getting into a lease, a contract, getting all the other paperwork through owning a potential lot.
Well, typically, we would give an application to a location. So now you're going to have it go to your house. And you're going to get a lot and you're going to have to transfer it to that location.
Correct. Not right away, but that's...
And so what are you going to do in the meantime? Not right away?
In the meantime, with the actual license.
I'm sorry?
With the actual license.
Yeah. What are you going to be doing? Where are you going to be storing cars? How are you going to be operating?
I will not be operating any cars to the property itself. I do have a mechanic that I usually work with, run around the street on Broadway. And if any cars that potentially get stored, it will be at that location that if started.
There will be no vehicles at number 18 Plimpton Avenue?
That's correct.
On display for storage or anything else?
Correct.
At this time or any other time in the future?
Absolutely correct.
Sir.
But you're going to put cars on Pleasant Street? You're going to sell those cars? Or you're just going to store them?
No, so definitely not selling until, like I mentioned, getting the actual location set up and going.
How many cars can you store at that location?
Four.
Four?
Correct.
You said Pleasant Street or Broadway?
Neither, Broadway.
Broadway.
Yes, sir.
So once you buy four cars, that's it? You can't sell them? You can't do anything with them? You're just going to sit on them for months or years, whatever, to get a location?
Not at all. I'm definitely brand-new into the idea of owning my own business. So I wasn't sure how the process goes with the town. That's really the whole process.
Mr. Ja.
I'm a little confused.
Please.
As we all are.
Typically, what we see is an individual that comes before us that wants to operate out of their home or apartment.
Yes.
For something like this that have come before us before is they're working with some type of auction house and they buy and sell, which is allowable, but it's never sold on the property itself. They do it from the auction house and then it goes wherever it goes. This doesn't sound like you're doing that. So I'm concerned that maybe you don't fully understand what needs to be done. So when you say, it sounds like you mimicked when it says, "Stay clearly the purposes for which the license is requested." You sort of copied what the state says on their form, which is to buy, sell, exchange, or assemble second-hand motor vehicles. So this license is for the location at 18 Plimpton Ave. You can't assemble anything there. So we'd have to take that off. If you're talking about buy, sell, and exchanging, you can do that via computer for someplace off-site, but you can't actually have vehicles at this premises, which you're asking to be licensed for, and then have someone come and pick it up and make either an exchange or give you a check and maybe drive it off with the vehicle. That can't happen here. So that's why I'm a little confused based on what you're telling my colleague.
And then if you're going to use another address, then that's the address that should be on the license.
So if you wanted to do it via computer and then the transaction of the vehicle itself happens elsewhere, that would be okay. But if you're talking about trying to get this license for this site and then get a lot in which you could actually store those vehicles and then sell them, I think you have the cart for wholesale.
That makes sense.
You should have the place where you want to do the business and then ask for a license at that place of business.
Understood.
That's just my opinion.
I agree.
Yeah. I did show up prior submitting the application mainly because most of the questions that I was confused with. Thank you for clarifying. The main goal originally was to never have a vehicle stored in any location, including my own property. The whole idea of the property was just to have an office that I can operate through.
Headquarters, the world headquarters.
Exactly.
Mr. Chairman, but you don't have anything to operate.
Correct me if I'm wrong, and Christina may have the answer to this. Didn't the Board approve a license similar for somebody who wanted to be able to go to auctions and buy and sell cars?
Their purpose was to sell wholesale.
Right, but they weren't going to be storing vehicles at their property. Somebody just said you need to have the license to do that. And I believe the Board approved that contingent on no vehicles being...
Right, but their explanation was they were going to be in the wholesale business. He's going to be in the retail business.
This is like we did on Winslow and Winfield.
But there's a few others.
We've done it at other locations in the past also. But these are people together, working at home. They may never even see the vehicle. They buy it in the auction. They get back on their computer and they sell it over here somewhere.
Or they're selling overseas. They already have the connections made up for those sales.
Mr. Howard?
Yeah, thank you. A little clarification, if I can. I'm not giving you advice, mind you. I'm just clarifying.
Taken.
We have had other people who've come in front of us with a similar request in that they could utilize their home to buy and sell vehicles. As has been said here, they... Most of them do not take possession of the vehicle even. That one party had told us that they sold these vehicles overseas somewhere. And others just said that on the internet that they already had possible buyers for vehicles and again, not taking possession of the vehicles. So, you know, again, not trying to give you advice. I give you advice. You might want to look into it a little more before you take the giant step.
So, thank you. There was two part of the research that I've done myself and also from talking to friends that's already in the business that potentially started the way you guys are mentioning as a wholesale, where you never really interact with the actual vehicle as it never is in possession, nor seeing or inspecting the actual car after you purchased it. Even with that process, everything gets potentially stored at the actual auction where you purchase the vehicle. My understanding, which the little confusion that clearly I'm showing here, is I thought I still need to have the office, like you're saying, through like a headquarter, but also still being able to have... Because based on the application is you still have to have a shop that you work with.
Premises for the cars. Yeah.
Right. So this is where the potential explanation that I came up with, where I want to talk to an actual mechanic around the corner from us. But if that is not even needed...
You're not distinguishing between retail and wholesale. And that's the issue that we're going to have the difficulty with. You can't operate a wholesale business from the address that you're listing. So we couldn't, I mean, a retail from that, from this location. So I don't see us, just me, granting, having...
No, that makes sense, based on that explanation.
If you're saying you're going to do wholesale from this location and eventually turning into a retail, then come back before this Board and say, "I want to transfer the license to an actual physical location to do retail." That's different. But it sounds like you want to jump right into the retail business. Can't be done from this location.
I understand. I'm sorry if that confused. That is not the purpose. That is not the purpose of my explanation.
The other thing, if it's the same loca... I don't know which Broadway is. Is it the one at the gas station also?
Right before.
Or is it the body shop?
It's the body shop. I believe it was...
He's got more storage, but still. I don't know.
Again, this whole...
But I do know on the auction, you only get a couple of days...
Five days.
To get that vehicle that you buy out of there. You don't get much time. So you want to be aware of that too.
I am aware. So the main reason I went the extra step, which sounded completely wrong to my request, and talked to the mechanic and to hold the car pretty much on the premises, is because the application requested where and who is your mechanic? Or where are you going to be storing this vehicle? When my intentions is to really not get to a mechanic at all. Because I'm not going to have possession of the vehicle.
You can do wholesale. You can do wholesale.
I can?
You can, yeah, without a mechanic or anything. Would you recognize it as retail?
Completely understand. I'm not even interested in the business of doing a retail at this moment.
Mr. Ous, let me see if I can try to clarify this a little bit more. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Mulvey, our clerk, and see if she can move it some.
So I think that what you did was go that, here's where I could store the cars if I had to, or here's where I would repair them if I had to. That portion of the application doesn't apply to a residential license. So because that was unclear, I think he said, okay, if I have to repair the cars somewhere, where would I do that? Here's where I would do it. He doesn't mean that portion. You just...
I don't.
You're not going to take possession of the cars. We don't want you to. So...
According, yes.
Right.
Based on the wholesale.
Just said he was going to. Just said he might buy up the four cars and have that stored.
Based on the storage that I had to discuss with the gentleman. But if I don't have to do that...
So then you're going to sell them from that location? So that's going to be retail.
You contracted for four slots.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And now, well, I might as well fill them, but now you find a well...
I pretty much showed up to the shop because we had, you know, a few of our cars repaired there before because they're very local. And I said, here is what I'm interested in doing. And part of the application process, because you're a business owner, that requires me to have a shop. Can I? And what's the options that potentially that we have? You know, choosing you at this location. And he was like, well, I am available. Here's, you know, the potential plans if you would like to go to. And that's when I came back. I'm like, okay, well, that's what it says in the application. Do you have that location? Fill it in.
Can I... Do you have anything else, Christina, you wanted to add?
Again, I believe that he... Initially, the plan would be you're going to work from a home office, acquire cars at an auction, leave them at the auction, and then transfer them to whoever is going to buy them. But because of the confusion, I think about what part of the application applies to a residential and a non-residential business, you thought you had to have a repair shop. You do not.
I wasn't clear on that part. So I just continued filling the blanks very much.
Right. So what he's talking about is just the same as what everybody else was talking about.
No, it's not. It's not what he was saying.
He's not going to take the cars.
He is going to take the cars. He's going to buy up the four cars, he just said.
I'm not going to take any possession of the vehicles. Because of that part of the application, the extra step.
Not going to store them on Broadway Street.
Correct.
Because if you store them on Broadway Street and sell them from your house
Because we store on Broadway Street and sell them from your house for actually retail selling from Broadway Street.
Understood. Based on the explanation, it makes more sense now. I'm saying I want, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. But I want the extra mile of making sure to fill the blanks in the application and went with that plan. But if I don't even need to go that far because the plan is still to remain wholesale and never see the cars, that actually makes my life easier. I don't need to have all the extra responsibility right now.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chairman, real quick? Do you have a market identified? Do you already know where you want to sell the cars?
I do. When you're saying a market, that's in like the people or...
Wholesale, wholesale companies. You're going to sell them to whom?
To whom?
Yeah.
So the whom is not really specific to anybody specific because it's the car sales. It doesn't matter who buys your car and you're not. You're only attacking a specific market based on the...
So you're not selling wholesale, you're selling retail.
Not really.
Sounds like retail to me.
So I would appreciate the understanding of the difference between the two things that I might be confused with, but that's not what I'm requesting.
That is what you're requesting.
Well, let's see, Bill, can I just ask what, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the licenses given to, say, Winslow and Winfield, though, they were with the understanding that people are going to buy automobiles at auction and sell them to whomever? Is that fair to say?
They told us they were going to buy them at auction. They were going to stay at auction for a week or whatever. They're allowed to pay for storage there. And by that time, they were going to transfer them to their wholesale company, sell them out. So they were never coming to the retail establishment.
Which are typically overseas.
Okay, but we, so if this applicant basically wants to take the same approach, he would be in conformity with earlier decisions now?
Except for that's what he's telling us he wants to do.
That would be true, Tom, except you have to take the word or assemble out of this request, right?
Right.
Okay, just so that we're clear.
I thought we agreed on that earlier.
And if his intentions are what he is explaining now, that he fully understands what the requirements are, I think that would be fine if you take or assemble. I would just leave it to buy, sell, or exchange.
I think he took that verbiage from his state license, not knowing exactly what to do. Correct?
That's correct.
I don't want to speak for you, but... Anything else from the board?
Close the hearing.
Give a second.
I have a motion and a second. Anything on the motion?
Just to close the hearing, you mean, or...
To close the hearing.
Yeah, no, nothing on the motion, closing.
I have a motion to close the hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Anything for the board? Motion? Mr. Hajar?
I was going to move to approve.
We'll tell you what else. Second, the motion to deny for discussion.
Okay, can I offer, sorry, just a suggestion?
Sure.
Since there seems to be...
Confusion.
Some confusion between what the applicant specifically wants to do, what the board normally licenses, and whether or not he actually needs a license to achieve what he wants to do. What we've done in the past is we've postponed a decision a week or so to let an applicant come in and just work with the staff and make sure we're all on the same page.
Can we just close the hearing?
I think the hearing is closed. I think he can postpone a decision on the hearing.
Oh, we can postpone a decision, yeah.
Correct.
We don't have to vote right away.
Because if you remember, we had this happen maybe six months ago where we just, we want to make sure that somebody's applying for the correct license. And since there's a little bit of a disagreement here, maybe we could give it a week and he could work with somebody in the board or work with the staff and...
But that's also collecting new data, which is information which comes to the hearing.
If you felt it fundamentally altered the hearing, you could always reschedule a hearing. Or if you just felt that this clarification, it might just be that...
Why don't we just, if the board was the vote to deny, which we haven't taken a vote yet, then the applicant can just make a new application and we deal with it when it comes forward in the proper form. Get it proper and deal with it.
With some slight modifications, we can accomplish that.
It's not like you're paying hundreds of dollars of fees and everything here. It's no particular burden.
No, I do believe we have a posting cost. Not that it's in any way substantial. But if we think we're 80 or 90% there and it's just maybe a small change, my recommendation would be have the applicant work with somebody in the board. And maybe you don't come to a meeting of the minds, but...
I'd be happy to work with Mr. Ous to try to get this clear or clearer so that we're all on the same page regarding what his specific request is.
Okay.
And my personal feeling is I don't think it's going to be that major that we have to start all over again.
It's a matter of tweaking this to get the right verbiage.